Amen. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now make a determination of a quorum. I'll call the list. Leslie Lambert.
Here.
Uh, Tamika White. Me, I'm here. Wendellin Bowie.
Here.
Ernestine Goolsbee.
Here.
And Steve Weinstein, not here. So we have a quorum and we will proceed. Uh, first thing I'll do is I will look for a, a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chair, um, move that we approve the agenda as written.
I have a first to approve the agenda.
A second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Uh, don't believe we received any minutes. Did we, Chris?
No.
I don't think we did. No, we did not receive any minutes. We'll hold off on the meeting on the minutes for next week. Uh, okay, and if we proceed with the, uh, rules of procedure for the public hearing.
Each speaker must sign their name to the appropriate zoning case sheet and fill out a public comment card to register their intent to speak prior to the start of this meeting. Each item of business shall be handled in the order that it appears on the agenda unless upon motion of the planning commission, the order is changed. A member of the city or county planning staff will present each item to the Conyers-Rockdale Planning Commission and will further provide a recommendation upon each item of business. The zoning applicant or the agent will state their name and address at the podium and will have 10 minutes in which to make his or her presentation. Any portion of their 10 minutes may be reserved for rebuttal following the opposition to the application. After the applicant's presentation, all registered speakers who wish to speak in favor of the application will then be heard. Prior to speaking upon the item, each registered speaker will state their name and address at the podium. They will also be limited to a total of 10 minutes. Once the applicant has made his or her presentation and the speakers in favor of the application have been heard, the secretary will then call upon the registered speakers in opposition to the application. The opposition shall likewise be limited to a total of 10 minutes. Once the public hearing portion is closed, no other speakers will be heard. As a reminder, speakers are to address the planning commission, not the applicant or the audience, and are expected to conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers shall be permitted. After all public comments have been heard, the planning commission may elect to hold general discussion. The planning commission will vote upon a recommendation that will continue forward to the City of Conyers, City Council, or the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners' public hearings.
All right.
Each speaker.
Whoops. Are we done? Okay. Uh, item six, old business, shall we? None. Item seven, new business, first item in City of Conyers. Mr. Gaither?
Mr. Chairman, Pro Tim, planning commission members, thank you. Um, again, I want to apologize for my voice. I'll speak into the microphone. That way you all and anyone in the audience can hear me. So the first item is a request of text amendment to section eight dash seven dash ninety, which is the principal permitted and special use section of the City of Conyers. This would be ordinance thirteen twenty-four and it's case number eight. That is eight of twenty twenty-three. So to spare you all, uh, listening to my voice and, uh, to spare my voice, I won't go in to explain what the industrial distribution district is for. It's in your application, or excuse me, in your packets and up on the screens for those in the audience viewing pleasure. But the city has a relatively healthy supply of industrial distribution zone properties, which contains a variety of building types that range from single tenant to multi-tenant and from two thousand square feet up to five hundred thousand square feet. The industrial distribution district provides for the establishment of businesses that are job centers and is the economic lifeblood of our local economy. It is imperative that these properties in use are used and remain available for light industrial and distribution uses identified within the table of principal permitted and special uses. There are a couple of uses that are identified as permitted in this district which could potentially cannibalize these properties for uses other than industrial in nature, and it is advisable to address these. One of these uses is identified as a mail center, not a mail as in human mail, but mail as in the post office or that brings us bills we don't want to get. These mail centers are permitted in the downtown center, gateway village, traditional neighborhood development, neighborhood business, mixed juice, general business, highway service business, and again, ID district currently. This is a commercial use that is better suited in areas that are intended for pedestrian level traffic and not associated with industrial or industrial traffic that industry often brings. Another use, other convenient goods stores, corner stores, general merchandise stores. These are permitted also in the downtown center, gateway village, traditional neighborhood village, offices, institutional, neighborhood business, mixed juice, general business, highway service business, and the ID. Like mail centers, these are specific retail uses that are intended to provide general everyday type goods for residents and better suited for locations near residential areas where pedestrian ingress and egress has less of an opportunity to conflict with industrial type vehicles. With that said, staff is recommending the removal of mail centers and the removal of convenient good, good stores from the industrial distribution zoning district. If you have any questions of me, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Gaither?
I will point out before, Mr. Chairman, that you open up to a public hearing that there may be businesses, a mail center, or convenience goods stores that are located in the ID district currently. Should this text amendment be approved by City Council, those businesses are not required to go away. They would be what's considered legal non-conforming and could remain there until they were to close up, and if they were to close for a period of six months, they could not be reestablished, just for clarification, in case any of you are wondering.
So that, that would have been a question. So you're grandfathering those in, but should they close, another business of that type could not come in that location?
If they were to come in within six months period of them closing, then that continuation of that grandfather could be.
Okay.
Okay, commissioners, I will entertain a motion at this time.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I don't believe anyone signed up to speak for or against.
You said there was nobody.
No, I said before you open up the public hearing, and I don't think there is anyone who signed up for or against. We do have a room full, but I. So, um.
So now we can proceed.
Yes, sir.
Since there is nobody signed up to speak, yea or nay, we will entertain a, a motion at this time.
Mr. Chair, I move that, uh, we approve case eight, twenty twenty-three, ordinance thirteen twenty-four, to amend the text to section eight dash seven dash ninety.
Do we have a motion or hear a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we'll move to the next item.
Thank you, and I'm gonna tag out and, uh, let Raina come up.
Good evening, um, Mr. Chairman, Pro Tim, and planning commission members.
Could you speak?
Yep.
Straight on in there.
Sure. Next item is case number nine, twenty twenty-three, ordinance number thirteen twenty-five. Is a request for a special use permit to establish a banquet hall in the Highway Service Business District. Location is six twenty Sigmund Road, and the applicant is Paris Brown. All right. A special use permit is to provide for uses that are generally compatible with the use characteristics of a zoning district, but that require individual review of their location, design, intensity, configuration, and public facility impact to determine the appropriateness of the use of any particular site in the district and their compatibility with adjacent uses. Special uses may require the imposition of additional conditions to make the uses compatible in their specific context. The applicant is requesting a special use permit for a banquet hall. A banquet hall is defined as a mean, is an establishment that operates for profit wherein the building or a portion of the building is leased out on a temporary basis for private events such as, but shall not be limited to, banquets, meetings, or wedding receptions. Private gatherings shall mean a gathering of persons who have been individually invited to the event and from which persons that are not so invited are excluded. The preparation and sale of food and/or alcoholic beverages may be incidental to the rental of banquet hall. In no circumstance shall any banquet hall be open to the public generally, nor shall any banquet hall supply live entertainment for the amusement needs of the public generally. Any floor area for dancing, speaking, or other similar activities shall not exceed a hundred square feet. Adult entertainment shall not be considered a form of private entertainment and is expressly prohibited. In addition, banquet halls have supplemental use standards. So before the use can be established, they must also meet this criteria. Banquet halls shall be located on streets classified as an arterial or collector street. The hours of operation for all banquet halls shall be limited to eight AM to eleven PM unless extended by the city manager and/or his designee. A minimum distance of a thousand feet shall be required to separate any banquet hall from any dwelling unit, including any dwelling unit outside of the city limits. The minimum distance shall be measured from the property line of the proposed banquet hall to the closest property line of the protected residential use. Uh, to ensure compliance of this distance, we do require them to submit a site survey that is done either by a professional engineer, landscape architect, or land surveyor. Um, and then we are also require them to provide 24-hour contact information in case any issues arise. Uh, you'll see here is, um, the map of the location. The red star is the building that we are, um, looking at. The site is one point zero eight acres. It is developed with an eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-six square foot multi-tenant building constructed in two thousand and one. Currently, there are two tenants that are occupying the building. Um, I would also like to add that within that building, uh, the two current tenants, one is a medical transport company. They do not typically have anybody coming in and out of that location besides maybe a few, um, transport vans. And there is another retail use on the end, which I believe may be primarily online. They don't have, um, a lot of foot traffic coming in there. Um, you'll see here, this is the zoning map. Um, the properties that surround the subject address are all zoned industrial distribution. This property was rezoned in twenty fifteen to HSB to allow for a greater variety of uses. Um, the property towards the north, that little triangle piece, is vacant land. Uh, currently serves as a detention pond. Across the street to the east is an electrical substation. Uh, to the north is an automotive repair facility, and to the west is, um, refrigeration equipment manufacturing. There are eight criteria that we look at when, um, when we receive a zoning request. This is the eight criteria. Um, the staff's answers are in your packet, so I will save your ears and not read all of those to you. I don't know if the, okay, the applicant is here, um, so I will let her speak. And also, um, staff does recommend approval of this request for a special use permit to be established, um, as a banquet hall in the Highway Service Business District at six twenty Sigmund Road. At this time, I'll let, or if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them. Okay.
Any questions, Raina?
Just one question. Is it transferable once she gets the special use approved? The next person, if, after the lease or whatever goes out, can, is it transferable that the next applicant has to come up?
Yes, the special use permit does stay on the property. However, if the use ceases for a period of twelve months, then the special use permit goes away, and they would have to come back in and reapply.
Thank you, Raina. We now hear from the applicant.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. My name is Paris Brown, and, um, I am looking to seek for approval for the special use permit. I humbly stand before you to advocate for the approval of the special use permit for my content studio, which will serve as a dynamic space for creativity, education, and community engagement. This permit would enable me to host trainings, seminars, and intimate gatherings, providing invaluable opportunities for growth and enrichment. By supporting this endeavor, we can unlock a world of opportunities that will benefit our city in numerous ways. Firstly, let us acknowledge the profound impact of art and media on our society. Content creation has been the power to shape narratives, create perspective, and ignite conversations that lead to progress. By approving this special use permit for my content studio, we can create a dedicated space where artists, filmmakers, and content creators can convey to share their knowledge and expertise. This studio will be open for all ages who wish to take pictures and, um, film content and photography. The studio will become a vibrant city for, a vibrant center for training, seminars, and intimate gathering, fostering an environment of learning, cooperate, collaboration, and inspiration. Furthermore, the establishment of this content studio as a venue for such gatherings will generate sus- substantial economic benefits to our city. The influx of visitors will not only boost our economy, but will also elevate our city's reputation as a premier destination for content creation. Moreover, the impact of hosting trainings, seminars, and intimate gatherings extends beyond the economic realm. These events will create opportunity for local experts and thought leaders to share their knowledge and expertise with attendees from near or far. By facilitating the exchange of ideas and promoting lifelong learning, we strengthen our communities' intellectual cap- capital and cultivate an environment that values continuous growth and education. In conclusion, the, the approval of this special use permit for my content studio will serve as a venue for all and is an investment for, for the future of our city. It will foster creativity, drive economic growth, and strengthen the bonds within our community. I implore you, esteemed members of City Council, to recognize the immense value this project brings to our community and grant the special mis- permit for my content studio.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Pardon?
Are there any questions?
I was getting ready to say, does anybody have any questions of Ms. Brown?
I just have one. Go ahead. You say yours first. You have a couple? Okay. You expressed that there's, it's a place for art, but art, so I just thought when you said event space, it was more speaking towards, um, like food gathering, or is, is that, that's not your intent?
No, so the, the space itself has multiple rooms, and so there's not a huge space for, you know, like, like huge events, folks. But so, for example, if somebody wants to come and have like a, again, like a seminar or a training, it'll be close to everyone else, to the public, like for regular admissions, but they can have the event there themselves.
I think it hasn't with, um, what's going on in Conyers as far as the film industry, so I think it may be a good, it may be good. So, you go ahead.
Hello.
Hi.
Um, a couple of questions for you. So this is approximately eight thousand square feet, a little over. Is that correct?
Well, the whole u- unit is. Mine's is about, um, thirty-eight square feet, thirty-eight hundred square feet.
Thirty-eight hundred square feet.
Yes.
Do you have intent to lease any offices on a permanent month-to-month basis?
No.
No. Okay. So, that's really all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
If somebody wanted to have a, you know, a small banquet or a dinner meeting of some sort, how many could, could your largest room seat?
Um, yeah, in the back, it could seat ninety-two.
Ninety-two?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no further questions, go back to.
If she has, I just, one more question. If she does have an event with ninety-two, uh, attendees, is there any stipulations as far as security, anything that would be go, required to be go with the special permit?
Staff does not require, or we do not require parking. It's not something that's in our ordinance. Um, I would like to note that if she is going to have a banquet, um, that is going to involve alcohol, she does have to apply for a special event permit with the city um, and go through that process and go through the police department. Depending on the amount of people, sometimes the police department does require for them to have, um, an officer on duty and/or traffic or crowd control. Okay, thanks.
Any further questions of the city? Thank you, Raina. At this time, I will entertain a motion regarding this item, case nine, twenty twenty-three.
I make a motion of approval for case nine, twenty twenty-three, ordinance thirteen twenty-five, of the request for a special use permit to establish a banquet hall in the Highway Service Business District.
All right, we've got a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll ask for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we move on to item C three.
All right, next item is case number ten, twenty twenty-three, ordinance number thirteen twenty-six. Is a request to amend the future land use map from general commercial to industrial distribution and to amend the official zoning map from Highway Service Business District to Industrial Distribution District. The location is twelve fifty Portman Drive. The applicant is John Nix. Uh, you'll see on your screen a, um, aerial view of the site. It is two acres and is developed with a twelve thousand four hundred and twenty square foot metal building constructed in nineteen eighty-eight and served as an automotive service garage, um, in the rear of that property. There is a fifteen hundred square foot metal building constructed around nineteen ninety-seven. Uh, you will see here on the map, um, where that star is and all the red is the future land use designation. Um, it is designated as general commercial. And here you will see the current City of Conyers zoning map. Again, the property is zoned Highway Service Business District, and the applicant is trying to rezone it to industrial distribution. Uh, the adjacent property to the north is current and auto, is currently an automotive dealership. Um, to the south is vacant undeveloped land. To the east is a heavy industrial manufacturing business, and to the west is heavy equipment, um, rental and sales. Again, on the screen, you will find the criteria that staff uses to weigh each zoning request. Um, staff's answers are also in your staff report. So the purpose of the ID district is to provide suitable location along arterial highways for wholesale warehousing, trade shops, and light manufacturing uses, usually located on or near existing community facilities and transportation corridors. As stated previously, this property is developed with a twelve thousand square foot metal building, which includes thirteen service bays. The property also has a fifteen hundred square foot metal building with four, four service bays constructed in around nineteen eighty-eight, I'm sorry, nineteen ninety-eight. Um, the building previously served as the service department for the adjacent dealership and has served as other automotive and body shops throughout the years. Um, presently, it is vacant and is not being used. When the property was developed, it was zoned IM, which was our industrial manufacturing district, and was later changed to ID, um, when the city amended the zoning ordinance and zoning map in two thousand and four. In two thousand and sixteen, the previous owner rezoned the property to HSB to, um, allow for the auto, an auto dealership to be established there. Currently, the applicant is under contract to sell this property with a proposed use as heavy equipment rental, sale, service, and storage. The present zoning Highway Service Business District does not permit the proposed use by right and requires the approval of a special use permit. The applicant is requesting to rezone this two, two acres in order to accommodate this potential tenant and allow for future industrial uses that are permitted within the ID district. The future land use map of the comprehensive plan identifies this parcel as general commercial land use. However, the adjacent and nearby properties on Portman Drive and Iris are longstanding industrial uses, with the exception of the Rockdale County offices. Additionally, the adjacent property to the east has a future land use designation as ID. Therefore, staff can support their request to amend the future land use map from general commercial to industrial distribution and to approve their request to amend the official zoning map from Highway Service Business District to Industrial Distribution District. Uh, the applicant is here, um, so I will turn it over to.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Before you come up.
Um, did I hear you say that there were two buildings on the property?
Yes, ma'am.
And they, they will use the existing buildings that are there?
I have not seen, um, a conceptual plan of what they are intending and using it for. I'm assuming that they would possibly use the existing structures.
So I can ask them a question.
But you can ask the applicant.
The other thing, um, about an estimate, you have an estimate about how much vacant property there is? You said there was vacant property to one side of that?
Uh, yes, and I believe it's about one point two six acres.
Okay, so not a lot, a lot. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Good.
John?
Good evening. Um, can you put it on the slide that shows the whole? I don't know how to function in the electronic world. The next, that's the one with the, I like the one with the. That's, that's. Thank you.
Um, it's good to be here this evening and on a light agenda. It's especially nice. Um, I represent Hillstone Advantage Partners, um, who have a contract with the owner to acquire this property. And if you look at the three tan parcels, um, they're actually under contract and you're going to hear our second application, uh, to, for the property directly below this one. So it's a two acre site with a star on it and then the next property down is a one point two six acre site. And the, the proposal is to combine those for one user, one end user. But we had to bring two applications because they were subdivided. So it's actually three parcels of land.
So does that, I'm sorry, but does that include the vacant, thank you, the vacant property that I was asking about?
Well, when you go, when you go south, when you go to the right of the property, that purple-
Yes.
Uh, that's Madison Industries. And if you go directly below the last tan block, you see that slender piece that comes down-
Yes.
And then goes toward the cul-de-sac, that's also Madison Industries, but they don't occupy it right now. Um, Hillstone Advantage Partners, um-
They were subdivided.
Pardon?
So it's actually three parcels of land.
Well, it was originally, it was originally three parcels. It's still three parcels. I believe when they went in for the rezoning to do the, the, uh, auto places on the front, um, we had some confusion as to whether or not there were three parcels or just one. And I think they just rezoned the whole parcel. Um, and maybe they did it because they wanted it all the same zoning. But you can see it's surrounded, uh, by the, uh, use that we're seeking. Uh, right across the street is a Sunbelt operation, which would be very similar to the one that they're proposing.
Yeah.
Um, Hillstone Advantage Partners actually is in the business of identifying small industrial type parcels that are either zoned industrial or could be zoned industrial and finding, connecting people to develop them or occupy them in a positive way. Uh, they operate all over the southeastern United States. They have very big connections with particularly equipment, heavy equipment, which is what they're asking for this site, and they're very successful at it. Um, this site has basically been, um, unused, uh, for over three years. Prior to that, it was unused. When it stopped being a car dealership, it really sat kind of vacant for a while, even though the front portion, I forget what, what it was used for before, but the back two parcels kind of fell out of disuse, occasional auto repair and the like. Um, we think it's, given the fact that Madison has been an industry here since the sixties and they show no sign of slowing down that I can tell, um, we, we felt like it would be appropriate, given their presence there and we're on the same side as Portman as they are, and as you go to the left, you see all the industrial uses, uh, rather than ask for a special use permit to go ahead and seek, uh, a rezoning of the property. The, the tough part about a special use permit, you just heard it, is if there's a cessation of use, you have to come back through the cycle again. And if the staff felt like it was an appropriate use to rezone it, we felt like we would go for it. And, uh, staff indicated to us early that they thought this was an appropriate use. Um, I'm going to reserve the rest of my time for any kind of rebuttal and of course, any questions from y'all.
Anybody have any questions of Mr. Nix?
I, I'm still confused about the property. So you're saying, okay.
I'm sorry.
So, okay, so it's two, three parcels of property here?
Okay, that's where I, that's where I confused everybody, including myself.
Okay.
The, the, the very top parcel that abuts Iris Drive, that's where that car dealership is.
Okay.
And originally, this, the three parcels were part of a large car, car dealership in the traditional sense with the repair, the bay, the service areas and everything else. But the only use that's in effect right now is that top parcel. Then there's two more pieces, the one with a star, which is a, a meets and bounds piece of property and the one below it-
Mm-hmm.
Meets and bounds. Um, we're talking about right now, obviously, the one with a star on it.
Mm-hmm.
But right behind us is our second application for the one below it.
Okay, okay.
And we couldn't do them together because they're separate parcels.
Okay, I get that. But that, that doesn't include the vacant property, or does it, that, that I asked her about? It does. Okay. That was my confusion.
And I was confused because I thought you might be talking about the vacant property of Madison.
No, okay, yes, okay.
No, the vacant property in the first app, this application-
Yes.
Is the property we're going to come talk to you about again.
Okay.
But I won't confuse you that time.
Okay, please. Okay, I think I got it.
Well, yeah, I will.
I think I got it now.
Of course I will. Yeah, you're right.
But thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question. Sorry. Um, so Hills Advantage Partners then takes these properties, leases them or to companies or organizations or private people or, that's my confusion. All of the above? Thank you.
Yes, we work with, uh, national and regional clients. Um, one in particular has identified-
Give me a second, Ma'am.
Sorry. Yes, we work with national, uh, and regional, uh, tenants who have expressed interest in the site. One in particular we're discussing with.
Can you identify yourself?
Yes, sorry. Patrick Sullivan with Hillstone Advantage Partners.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Pat.
Any further questions of Mr. Nix?
I do. Um, if it's going to be considered for a large equipment, is there enough easement to get in and out of the establishment, you know, for the heavy equipment, for the transporters to come get the heavy equipment? You know, it's just, that was one of my, one of my concerns with the two lane-
Yes, they, they've looked at the site and determined, they've walked the site, they've had their people come in and look at the site. This is something that they are engaged in all the time. And Portman Drive does have the width and Sunbelt right across the street is operating a similar facility and they're coming out on Portman Drive as well. And quite candidly, there's not a ton of traffic on Portman Drive because the back end of it, when you get to the cul-de-sac, half of it is not in use by Madison. The other half is a storage yard for a wrecker service, um, but it's not a junkyard. It's a storage yard for a wrecker service where the cars go in and out.
They have to come out onto Iris Drive, correct? They have to come, yeah.
Yes, it would. That's the only place they can go is Iris Drive.
So when they come out of Iris Drive, they only can go up to, um, one thirty-eight or either West Avenue. Is that a correct statement?
Yes.
So you still have to get out onto-
Or the other way.
The signal, you have to get on onto that.
Use the mic if you will, to try to make sure it's screen.
Just try, I'm just trying to get them coming in and on. That's a bit, it's very busy there and there's a lot of traffic. I just wanted to get an idea of, um, is that being taken into consideration, any, because of coming in and on?
Well, I think, I think, I think it's been taken into consideration because they're in this special niche of, of developing and finding this kind of property and they, they have an entity that is in that business that's interested. So I, I understand your concern about the traffic, but I don't think that this particular operation is going to generate more than maybe, I don't know, fifteen, twenty trips a day. And I'm guessing, I have no basis for that, other than they, they're going to rent so much equipment per day, um, but that would really be the only traffic out of there. So, uh, it's going to make more traffic come in and out of Portman Drive, but any use that goes there would do the same thing, whether it's zoned the current way or as ID. Um, and I imagine most of them, knowing how people that haul rigs, they're going to take a right and get on the interstate as fast as they can. And of course, once they take that right, they've got the benefit of the stoplights when they make that turn and get onto one thirty-eight.
Any further questions? Thank you. Ms. Rain, anything else from you?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Unless you have any questions for me.
I don't.
I don't.
Okay. Thank you.
Other people signed up to speak?
All right, at this time, we will, uh-
Other people signed up to speak? Signed up to speak?
I don't think, was any, was there anybody signed up to speak, one way or the other? Okay. Hearing none, um, we will move for a, a motion at this time on this item.
Mr. Chairman, I move to, uh, approve the request to amend the official zoning map for Highway Services Business District HSB to Industrial Distribution District ID.
And? And to amend the official zoning?
Oh, do I need to do two things?
No, you just need to complete the paragraph there.
I did.
And to amend the official zoning map from Highway Service Business District.
Oh, okay. Yes, yes, yes. That too.
That too. Okay. Do I hear a second on that too?
I didn't see that.
You need further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Item C four. Rain?
This one's going to sound very similar to the last one. This is case number eleven, twenty-twenty-three, ordinance number thirteen twenty-seven. A request to amend the future land use map from general commercial to industrial distribution and to amend the official zoning map from Highway Service Business District to Industrial Distribution District. The location is twelve seventy Portman Drive. The applicant is John Nix. As you will see on the map, um, the property we are looking at now is going to be that vacant piece that is to the south of the previous item. Um, it has one point two acres and currently does not contain any structures.
One point two eight or one point two six?
One point two six.
Okay.
The future land use map is designated as general commercial, as you will see there with the star. Current zoning is HSB. Um, you can see there as well. Again, there's a criteria that staff looks at when weighing a zoning decision. And I will give a little bit of history on the property. Uh, the property is undeveloped with one point two six acres, zoned Highway Service Business District. Um, it was previously used a long time ago in the eighties for vehicle inventory storage for the, um, car dealership that was, um, abutting Iris Drive. Um, that property probably has not been used for storage since two thousand and nine, just based off of the amount of vegetation that is on site. Um, it appears that there may be some old gravel that is on there, um, from several years ago. This piece of property will be used as associated storage to the heavy equipment rental sales and service you, use proposed on the adjacent parcel. Any outdoor storage shall adhere to the supplemental use standards within section eight dash seven dash nine two UU. Um, those outdoor storage requirements, I won't read all of them. Um, two of the main are that outdoor storage must be screened by a solid fence or wall at least eight feet in height on all sides and the setback distance shall be appropriately landscaped to provide a vegetative, vegetative screen. Um, the future land use map of the comprehensive plan identifies this parcel as general commercial land use. However, the adjacent and nearby properties on Portman Drive and Iris are longstanding industrial uses, with the exception of the Rockdale County offices. Additionally, the adjacent property to the east has a future land use designation as ID. Therefore, staff can support their request to amend the future land use map from general commercial to industrial distribution and to approve the request to amend the official zoning map from Highway Service Business District to Industrial Distribution District. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Anybody have any questions for Rain? Mr. Nix again?
On, on behalf of the applicant, I don't have anything to add from the prior presentation. I'll field questions if there are any.
Okay. Again, we'll ask, is there anybody here to speak? Hearing none. Has Rain got any more questions of the city? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion at this time for item C four. Today. I'm quoting the mayor from last night.
Okay. I, I move to, um, to approve the request to amend the future land use map from general commercial, which is GC, to industrial distribution ID and to amend the official zoning map for Highway Services Business District HSB to Industrial, uh, Distribution District ID.
First and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item C four is approved. Moving on to Rockdale County.
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, so the only thing we have for today is a preliminary plate, a preliminary plat for you. Uh, it's off of Lynn Road. Uh, it's submitted by Christian Duhall of Alliance Engineering Planning. Uh, again, this preliminary plat was part of a rezoning case, RZ twenty-two dash twelve, uh, previously, uh, submitted to the, to the Rockdale County Plan Commission and Rockdale, uh, Board of Commissioners as well. Uh, this is the preliminary plat. Um, again, they have been reviewed and approved by all departments, uh, as far as the plat is concerned. Uh, it's in for you, uh, for approval.
Do you have any idea when the development is going to start possibly?
Uh, so after the preliminary plat is approved, has been approved, they have to still submit for their land disturbance permit. Uh, they still have to actually get approval for the land disturbance permit, uh, from all county departments. So it's probably maybe a couple of months, well, probably a couple of months, probably maybe four more months before they actually start construction on, on this project.
Okay.
Uh, even though the preliminary plat has still been approved, they still have to go through the LDP process, which again, uh, specification as far as grading, erosion control, stormwater and issues of that nature. Uh, those, again, still have to pass that hurdle before the actual construction of any type of building, uh, out there on the site.
Okay.
So again, there's still, so, there's still several, several up steps they have to meet, uh, with this.
This is the thing that just gets it started.
Okay. One of many, huh?
Right, one of many. Does anybody have any further questions for Mr. Wheeler? I'll entertain a motion to approve the preliminary plat, PP twenty-three dash one dash thirty-five. Do I hear a motion?
A motion to approve the preliminary plat, case number PP twenty-three zero one thirty-five.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh, so, uh, we do have a report for you, uh, concerning, uh, House Bill fourteen oh five and from the previous meeting. Uh, again, so staff made some changes, uh, at the last bill, uh, because there were some concerns regarding the House Bill fourteen oh five and the proposed text amendment that staff presented to you. Uh, so staff went back and took out all, everything not related to House Bill fourteen oh five. So again, those specific sections talking about multifamily housing, promoting all of those, we took all of those out and then everything strictly in the orders is, again, related to House Bill fourteen oh five, zoning procedures act required by the state.
Basically, we just cleaned up the legal leaves so that we could understand it.
Yes, sir. Yes, yes, sir. That's exactly what we did.
All right. Somebody have any questions of Mr. Wheeler regarding the staff update? All right, I'll entertain a motion for item R two.
Mr. Chairman, I move that, uh, we approve the ordinance to amend section one oh six dash one definitions, section two thirty-eight dash four, which are the amendments, section two thirty-eight dash eight appeals, section two thirty-eight dash nine, the variances, and section two thirty-eight dash one administrative bodies to comply with zoning procedure, uh, law per H, uh, House Bill fourteen oh five.
Thank you. I've got a first, do I hear a second?
A second.
Got a first and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item R two is passed on there. All right, item six, item C, uh, talks about our, um, next coming meeting, but we did not have anything on reports. Do we got any reports from the city?
The city will have two text amendments before you in July. And I'd like to say, Dr. Bowie, it's been a pleasure. Um, I understand your term. This is your last meeting.
This is my last.
Unless, uh, unless the VOC asks you to come back. But I certainly have appreciated working with you the last couple of years and getting to know you.
All right, Item C, Item C talks about our next coming meeting. But we did not have anything on reports. Do we got any reports from the city?
The city will have two text amendments before you in July. And I'd like to say, Dr. Bowie, it's been a pleasure. I understand your term. This is your last meeting. Unless, unless the VOC asks you to come back. But I certainly have appreciated working with you the last couple of years and getting to know you a little bit better. The city council is-
What do we do if we don't have enough to create a quorum with her not being here? And I guess that would be the only one that would not run the chance that we would have. This one person could be out if we, for that meeting. Is that correct?
Well, the city council is geared up to make two appointments at their June meeting.
Oh, so we may have two replacements for the July meeting?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
All right.
But thank you for your concern and consideration. But as of now, the city does have two business items. And those are text amendments that you will see in July.
Okay. Any reports from the county?
Not at this time, sir.
Okay. Those two items were left off the agenda. And in addition to that, left off the agenda was where we have board comments. Do we have any board comments tonight? Like, do you want to do a nice little farewell speech?
Listen, oh, yes, to my roomful of people. It has been a pleasure to serve on this committee. To my colleagues, it's been real. And see you next time.
All right. Any other board comment?
Can I ask something personal? Scott, what happened to your voice? I'm sorry. Okay, then. Thank you. I'm waiting on it.
Well, the long-awaited vote for one of our most controversial items will occur, I think, next week, next door. That will be the vote on the Cabrera Property Rodeo. There's been a lot of controversy on that. And it, let's hope for the proper conclusions of that. With not hearing anything else, as far as board comment, this meeting is adjourned. Less than an hour.